Good evening and welcome to the May 20th, 2015 Board of Education meeting. We've been in executive session since 6:00 PM to discuss a potential district litigation regarding an educational program matter as well as contract negotiations with the Collective Bargaining Unit. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have any participation in government students? Okay, got a few of you here. Your requirement is that you stay till 9:00. At 9:00 if we're still going, we'll take a break and you'll come up and you'll need to sign out to get credit or if you have any documents that you need signed by the board members, we'll do that for you. If we get done prior to 9:00 then come up at the end of the meeting. Introductions?
Christine Beck.
Lynn Lenhart.
Diane Stever.
Jody Monroe.
Tom Douglas.
Matt Downey.
Charmaine Widdesinger.
Michael Cooper.
Joanne Cunningham.
I'd like to start tonight by saying thank you to the community and to the public who came out yesterday and supported us with a 78 percent majority vote in support of our budget. We appreciate that as a board and also to congratulate Lynn Lenhart and Charmaine Widdesinger on winning and we also thank again the public for coming out and supporting us. Next, the approval minutes of the May 6, 2015 regular board meeting. Let me finish. She's trying to get you guys out of here before 9:00. The minutes of the May 13, 2015 special board meeting and the minutes of the May 19, 2015 special board meeting.
Second.
First and second. Any discussion on those items? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions that item carries? Next is the Student Senate Report. Do we have someone from the Student Senate this evening? Okay. The Student Senate, yeah. Next is the Superintendent's Report. Dr. Douglas?
Well, thank you President Downey. I think you sort of shortened up my report very well at the start because I too just want to thank the greater Bethlehem Central community for their outstanding support of this year's spending plan as well as all the propositions that we've placed before. They will certainly help the district have a strong way to move forward with financial savings for future capital issues as well as maintaining our transportation fleet which has been downsized over the past several years. But what is really nice is that, you know, education has been under a public assault, I would say, over the past several years and Bethlehem has really tried to make sure that we've unified everyone from the staff to the administration of the board to the community to the taxpayer in general in trying to make sure that we find the solutions and it was very wonderful that this year we have been able to produce and stick to our spending plan and move forward in a time to make the district fiscally strong and really prudent with our purchasing while enhancing the education for the greater Bethlehem Central community. So, I want to thank everybody for the support from the faculty to the staff, the community to taxpayers, really for just making everything possible that really developed in this year's budget season. And that goes obviously to the board just because of the fact you do tireless hours and, you know, it's with a great paycheck and we wish we could pay you more than just love and care and volunteerism. So, but thank you very much for everything you do and thank you again to the community. So, there are many activities at the end of the year that are happening and taking place. I know Dr. Widdesinger will probably mention Unified Sports but we have many concerts. We have many activities. I know the Spectrum is coming up in a couple of weeks. We have our annual award ceremony. It seems like the next six to seven weeks will sort of go by with a blur but we hope to hold a wonderful commencement and also as the senior ball is coming, everyone will be safe as they go out and celebrate their culmination of their career here at Bethlehem Central. So, that's my report and wish everybody well and thank you again.
Thank you, Dr. Douglas. Next is the Board of Education Report. As I previously stated, thanks again to the community. Anyone else want to report on things?
Next week, the Crucible will be at the high school so there'll be three showings, two on Saturday, one on Sunday. So, if you can make it, come out. There's a couple dozen kids performing. It should be a good show. And Charmaine, if you're talking about Unified Basketball, I don't want to take your thunder but I've been hearing great, great comments on the program and they're looking forward to it expanding next year and it's bringing a lot of kids together that normally wouldn't be together and I'm happy that we have it here as a district.
Well, first, I also want to thank the community for the certainly coming out to vote and approve the budget. I feel like it was a very reasonable budget. We were able to add a lot of positions back in that we had made, from which we had made cuts in the past several years. So, to me, it was really a budget that I think anybody, everybody should have voted yes on. Not everybody did but it just was, it really felt good this year to put that budget to the community. And I also want to personally thank all, everyone who voted for myself and for Charmaine. You know, I really appreciate that support to continue on with the good work that we're doing in the district. And speaking of good work in the district, there's so much going on and I, the only one, there are two things I want to mention. The Character Awards Breakfast at the middle school and the Service Recognition Tea at the high school. I want, I really wanted to mention them because so often we applaud success in academics, we applaud success in sports but sometimes we, you know, we don't look at as much at service and at character and I think that in rounding out any student's education, these are very vital parts of it and certainly will make, make them better citizens by their participation in these activities. So, I thought it was great to recognize both of those.
First of all, I'm going to ask a request. Because of the acoustics, people have to speak, even us have to speak right into the microphones because I can kind of hear both of you but especially on the ends, if you could speak directly into the microphone, that would be helpful. I did attend the Unified Basketball game on Monday. The Hooligans were there. There were students who were coaches, students who were athletes, students in the stands. It was a great time and it really was a great demonstration of people working together and people having a blast. The parents in the stands were ecstatic to watch their kids. My daughter's a basketball player for the district. She was there. She was excited. She says, "I want to do this with track and I know it's expanding so I think that you have a lot of excitement." I want to appreciate Mr. Keys and Dr. Douglas and other staff who had the vision to bring that here and to work to make that happen. I went to the Heart and Soul Art Exhibit yesterday. It was lovely just to talk to a couple of the seniors who had portraits up and their plans for next year was exciting and I went to the National Auto Society induction and they talked a lot about service there and that was lovely to attend. I do want to ask you about extra security in the coming year but the other thing I will mention is it's really a plea to the community. The traffic in the high school and the way that people are driving there in the morning is a problem and I do drop my kids off because I'm going that way. It's getting to the point where it's just a matter of typing for somebody that gets killed or someone gets hit and so I just ask the community to use kind of common sense in terms of pulling over to drop off kids, to signal, all the rest and to just take your time because the time that you save by going a little bit slower or stopping is going to save that kid's life. It's literally that, 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 I think. So, I'm asking the community to do that. And I did mention to Dr. Douglas that I believe around this time of the year, we have extra security or we have in the past because I know there's been some issues in the, or concerns from neighbors in terms of parking lot issues. Could you just comment on that?
We get extra patrols especially from our lease with the Sheriff's Department. Out of Clarksville, one of the things that they've sort of done is quit pro quo is from roughly Memorial Day on, they start sending extra patrols around as does Bethlehem Police Department as you get closer to the end of the year, especially the Bethlehem Police Department makes sure that they're regularly in the area to just keep a lid on things, so to speak.
And so, if people have concerns, they should contact, not necessarily the district, especially if it's off hours, but should contact the police.
Definitely contact the police department, yes.
Just a note with what Charmaine was saying about the school parking lot in the morning, didn't we talk at one point to see if police would help with that in the morning, curfew traffic control or whatever?
It's hard for the police to dedicate someone to that specific issue. One of the things that the high school did along with the town and the Department of Transportation, because that's a state road, they did work on the traffic light issue and really they've narrowed it down to about a 10 to 15 minute window where it's not as heavily congested or it is as heavily as congested as it's going to be but it's really good vigilance on the parents' part, making sure. I mean, unfortunately, we have some individuals that tend to get in a hurry. It's like we had a bus accident where somebody was pulling around a bus just because they were in a hurry and wanting to pass the bus in that area and they ended up clipping a mirror and so forth. It's just good common sense and courtesy that would most likely prevail in a better format for everyone.
Anyone else?
Just, I just want to also say thanks for the big turnout on the budget vote and a special thank you to all the community members that use social media to get the message out to their friends, their neighbors and that was, I saw a lot, a lot of posts and tweets and I think that really helped get the word out. It's nice to see the community kind of rallying. Just, I went to a couple of events as well. There's so much going on between now and the end of school. If you blink, you're going to miss something really important but great stuff. I'm glad, I think we have girls lacrosse who were at a second game of sectionals tonight, tomorrow, so we wish them well but really strong lacrosse team outcomes this year. We're finishing that up at Boys and Girls Lacrosse and we have lots of great stuff coming up, that Spectrum concert that I can't say enough about. I didn't realize the Crucible was coming up next week but, so really good stuff and that's it for me.
I forgot something because I jumped right into basketball. I do want to again thank the community like as Lynn said for the support of the work of the board and the district and for the support of me. I definitely look forward to the next three years and serving you as best as I can and thank you again for your support.
And I forgot one thing too, since we're here at the middle school. Next, next week or the week after is the High Honors Reception for the kids that have made the honor roll for most of their middle school career and that's quite of an accomplishment, I think, during this time period. So, I would like to recognize those kids and say thank you for doing a great job and they're getting set up for high school, so.
All right. Next is our presentation and tonight we're here at the middle school because last year as a board, when we began in July, we said, "How can we engage more with the district and the staff and whatnot?" So, we decided to go on the road and do board meetings from each of the buildings throughout the year. So, tonight is our night to be here at the middle school and we thank the staff and administration here at the middle school for hosting us and we're now going to have a presentation by Mr. Klugman, the principal, on the Bethlehem Central Middle School, High School Acceleration Program.
Thank you, everybody. We're very excited that we're sort of bringing our road to the middle school tonight. We are in a beautiful and luxurious auditorium in our middle school. We are privileged to be in the center of town, the rent to make suburban middle schools and post staff and we love our location and we're thrilled to have you here tonight. I also want to echo some of the comments that were made earlier tonight. With regard to our budget, we're thrilled as our budget passed but the experience that I've had a little, three times in the last two weeks is sitting in on interviews with some of our new teachers and as, you know, in many years past, when we have a chance to hire for a 10-year track teaching position, it's really thrilling. We haven't had a lot of those opportunities in the last year, nine years because of budget cuts that you all have had to make and those decisions have been very difficult, I know, and I appreciate all the service that you've put into, to make those decisions. I think you would be thrilled to know that I sat in interviews for eight and a half hours yesterday with one half hour break and I have a love-hate relationship with interviewing. It can be a long day but yesterday, when I got to the end of my day, I had more energy than I did when I started because of the quality of the candidates and the folks that we had an opportunity to listen to and it's been thrilling because in the three different positions that we've interviewed for that I've been participating in, we have some great candidates. So, you'll, at our new teacher reception later this fall, you'll have a great time because we'll have some great folks for you guys to meet. And that is really the, I think, the culmination of where we've been in the last eight years. So, hopefully, as Dr. Douglas mentioned, we're starting to come around. So, welcome to the middle school. Tonight, let me pull up our presentation. We're going to talk to you about some of the new curriculum offerings that we have at VCMS. So, joining me tonight are Mr. Mark Warford, who is our Assistant Principal, and Mr. Dave Zadorian, who is our Administrative Dean. Before I bring Mark and Dave up, I just want to give you an overview. Five years ago, we brought Studio and Art, which is routinely and typically a ninth grade course that carries high school credit, down to eighth grade. So, when you think about five years ago and what the significance is of that, our first class is now, of eighth graders that took Studio and Art are now in their senior year and Dave has more to share with you about that. And we are now entering, so this eighth grade class is our first class that took Introduction to Engineering and Design, which is a Project Lead the Way class and Mark will talk more about that in a moment. And we just now fulfilled our second group, so our letters have gone out. We've notified the eighth graders that have been accepted into both classes for next year, current seventh graders. And Mark will also be talking to you more about computer science that's been interwoven through all of our grade levels and we'll see that that being introduced in each of the next three years across those different cohorts. So, without any further ado, we're going to start off with Studio and Art and I'm going to bring up Mr. Dave Zadorian to talk more about that.
Evening, everybody. All right. Studio Art is, as Mike said, it's in its fifth year here at the middle school and we're really looking forward to continuing this program. It's a great, great course. It is a comprehensive foundation course in art. It's fully aligned with the New York State Standards of Visual Media and Arts and students are engaged in a wide variety of two and three dimensional experiences in drawing, painting, sculpture, architecture, printmaking, ceramics, and digital media. And also this curriculum, sort of the units entwine contemporary and historical works of art for reference and inspiration. Really, really nice round curriculum there. The elements and principles of design are also stressed, learned, and applied and the course meets one unit of fine arts credit needed for graduation. Students are given a basic supply list for this course as well and we have roughly over the five years that we've had it here at the middle school, the applications range from 61 to 78 students apply and we roughly have an enrollment of typically 30 students for the course each year. The nice part about that is 85 to 90 percent of those that are enrolled continue in art in ninth grade and this year, seniors, as Mike mentioned, were the first cohort to have studio art here at the middle school and 20 out of the 78 seniors in the art exhibit are from that cohort. So, you can see that the genesis of this program here at the middle school is carrying on through the high school and hopefully, hopefully some careers for students as well. So, that's all I have on Studio Art and...
I have a quick question?
Sure.
Is that, how often does that class meet? Is it every day?
Every day. Yep. That's a full year course. And as I said, students get a high school credit for that course. It's good for their fine arts credit.
How come, if you have, how many students want to take it? Over twice the number of one class, it's not possible of a second section?
That is a great question, Lynn. We will, we'll explore that and see if we can add another section since our budget times are improving, so.
So, how do you select that 30? I mean, do they have to demonstrate what they can do?
It's a lottery.
Yeah, right now it's a lottery, so. But, it's a great point and the more students that apply, obviously, we'd like to offer that if we can, so. Any other questions?
No, I was just going to say, my daughter was part of that original class and what was kind of cool for me as the parent is she wasn't a kid that I would have naturally thought would have, you know, sort of gravitated toward, toward that kind of course and, you know, to see what she produced, I mean, it was pretty amazing and, you know, I think it did open up her perspective about, well, gee, I didn't realize that, you know, I had this much capacity to do this kind of work. I mean, it really, really is a great thing. I would love to see other sections because one of my other kids didn't get chosen for the lottery, so, you know, that's too bad but I understand it'd be great to be able to offer it to everybody who wants it.
Absolutely. Agreed. Hopefully, we can bring that forward going, going into the next few years if our budget process continues to be positive, so.
Other questions? All right. With that, I will introduce our Assistant Principal, Mark Warford, who's going to talk about Introduction to Engineering and Design.
Welcome to the middle school. I'm going to have to move the mic up just a bit here. So, welcome. It's very nice to have you here. I believe this is the last of your leg of school tours, so, welcome. Very nice. Tonight, I'm going to speak a little bit about Introduction to Engineering and Design. This particular class is the foundational technology class for CAD and mechanical drawing. It is part of the Project Lead the Way sequence, which are five courses, so that students are able to take one course each year, starting in eighth grade, so by the time they get to their senior year, they can have full college credit for the work that they've done in this coursework. And you can see, these are some of the things that, that students perform in the Introduction to Engineering and Design, single view drawings, three view drawings, geometric construction problem solving, dimensioning, sectional and auxiliary views for mechanical parts and then they end with full three dimensional drawings of mechanical parts. So, it really ties closely to the engineering field and, you know, what it does is, by the time students have gone through the Project Lead the Way program, well, you really have quality candidates that are ready to enter the engineering field or some other STEM-related field plus just the rigor of those courses really prepares students for higher education in general. So, it's a, it's a great sequence of courses. This one course does meet New York State graduation requirements for fine arts as well and students can earn credit from Hudson Valley Community College and Rochester Institute of Technology and students are as well accepted through lottery. We have approximately 60 or so students each year that try to apply. Then, the first, the first group that came through last year, actually, all of those students are either in a STEM pilot as a freshman or in a sequence for Project Lead the Way. So, the whole idea of trying to engage kids in STEM and technology seems to be working because all those students that were in IED last year are now engaged in those types of courses at the high school. So, and Amy Ludik is a teacher here that has taken that on and she's done a really great job as has Jen Gagne, our science supervisor, who's introduced that. So, and then, in a related type of course, this isn't a high school credited course but this year, for the first time, we are going to be creating a computer science course, which is going to be a combination and an enhancement of the academic technology management and computer literacy courses that typically were 10-week courses offered for sixth graders. We've decided to go ahead and to create 20-week courses that are taught by each of the two different technology teachers at the sixth grade. Heavy focus on Google Apps. Google is everywhere, no matter what part of your work world or personal life, Google is around and so it's really to immerse kids in that. To teach keyboarding, I particularly like when I walk by the class and you've got the little cardboard cutout over the keys so the kids can't see what they're, but I could have used some keyboarding. I'm a two-fingered typer, for those who know me, but I type quickly. But keyboarding skills, a great skill if kids need it. The computer science also teaches organizational skills. Our sixth graders are coming from a smaller elementary setting with just a few teachers now to over a half a dozen different teachers in different parts of the building, so they also help students to get themselves organized in terms of managing their time and their materials. They teach digital citizenship. Detective Whitley goes into the classes, talks about internet safety, basics, you know, don't share personal information over the internet, be aware of the source of your internet information that you pull from. All important things for our students to know in this technology age and also a new emphasis on research skills to be able to access information to do research projects and by taking those two 10-week classes and creating a 20-week block, it also allows for further integration and collaboration with the computer science teachers, with the team teachers, especially when it comes to research projects. They can now collaborate and kids can now have two periods of research, either in the LMC or using our computer labs to be able to get their work done. So, we're very excited and hopefully that computer science class is going to continue to generate excitement about technology and lead right into IED and some of our other exciting things going on at the high school.
Mark, I just wanted to, I'm sorry, Lynn.
No, go ahead.
Hopefully, you will never need this but for the keyboarding component, you might want to have the instructor look into some adaptive keyboarding instruction because you may have students like myself who have nerve damage in one hand, who can only type with one hand and when I was a student, there was no instruction for how you keyboard with just one hand and it's, you know, very important.
Yep, that's a, that's a very good point.
I was curious about the gender breakdown for the IED class and the class, you know, the present class and the class that's moving forward to the high school.
From what I understand, it is almost exactly 50 percent boy-girl ratio in that class. Yeah, yeah, that is great.
I have a question, by the way. It was typing when I was in high school and they had like a tape a week. Oh, yeah, we had typewriters. The digital citizenship component, does it also talk about what I would call digital civility because it's not just about what you share, it shouldn't share what's public and private, but for example, anti-bullying perspectives, is that shared under digital citizenship or is that a totally different part of the middle school curriculum?
Well, the character program we have at the middle school does quite a bit to address choices that students make, both in school, in person, and also outside of school and on social media. But, as part of the digital citizenship union, they absolutely discuss demeanor and conduct while you're on social media and the fact that once you put it out there, you can't take it back. As much as you'd like to, you can't. And Detective Whitley, actually, when he goes into classes, sometimes he works with Bill Riley, a sixth grade social studies teacher and Bill will act like he's emailing someone from Belize or another country and that person begins to ask information that really should not be shared when actually it's Detective Whitley in the other room on the computer and at the end, they come out and they tell all the students what's been going on. So, part of that is definitely students being aware of what they put on the internet, good and bad.
I think it's great that you're combining the classes and adding a little more computer science to it. I think it'll really excite the kids. Just the name change alone, I think, will be exciting for all.
Yes, and another, another piece of that that I almost forgot was we're going to be introducing coding, which is again, a foundational building block of the technology classes up at the high school. So, because we now have 20 weeks to teach this course, we can include that, which is going to make the program even stronger.
So, how do we make the, these programs that are, you know, lottery driven, that are sort of outside the basic stuff but clearly have tremendous advantage and potential and are just wonderful adds to the curriculum? How do we make sure that, that parents are sort of tuned in to, you know, that they're available, that they're important, that they're part of, like a broader vision? I mean, I think about how, now, my third kid is leaving the middle school and thank God I have one left so I can do everything perfectly with respect to the curriculum at Bethlehem. But I feel like as a parent, you're so overwhelmed when you come from the elementary to the middle school and you sort of follow along with kind of what is presented, you know, these are the classes your kid's going to take and, and you don't ask a lot of questions. You're just assuming that everything's going to sort of fall into place and, and I just think if I knew now what I should have or if I knew then what I know now, you know, even with my oldest and definitely with my daughter who's just now leaving the middle school, you know, I would have kind of structured some things a little different. I, as a parent, would really emphasize the sequencing piece and, you know, and I think that would benefit my, my children who, you know, didn't necessarily go through the whole sequence or some of them, you know, kind of missed out on even kind of jumping into them. So, I just wonder, you know, it's so overwhelming when you get here as a parent and I think of my youngest who's fourth grade, where I'm going to do everything right with her and I think of her peers whose parents, you know, her, her friends who are the oldest in their family and they are coming into a middle school that even... And they are coming into a middle school that even in the past few years is adding really great stuff to the whole package. I just wonder, I know we do information sessions and we email out and SNN is great, but it does get lost in the whole sort of package of, you know, your kids moving up to that next level.
We're busy. It's a busy community. And especially, you have more than one child who's got involved in piano lessons and sports and religion and just the academics, the rigor of the academics here. So, I completely understand. The good thing is, is all students that come in from the elementary school all take the same coursework. There really isn't any decision-making in terms of a sequence. That happens with the studio and art and IED in the eighth grade. And, you know, we have the typical tools of the SNNs, the parent information night, the counselors reach out to parents. We send things home. So, you know, we do the best we can to get information out there and hopefully, people respond and ask questions. And we make sure we've got that information readily available for them, both on our website and through information sharing.
Yeah. No, I'm going to think about this because I almost wonder if there should be some sort of, you know, sharing by people who've just gone through it with all the folks behind us. Because there's a million things that I... As soon as I learn them and they're important, you know, I share them with my friends whose kids are coming through. But, you know, I think there's so much opportunity at Bethlehem that you've got to pay attention to what's available. And I know you guys don't miss a beat with kind of all the required stuff and making available, these are your options, these are your choices. As a parent, though, I'm not plugged in when my kid says, "Well, you know, I didn't opt for studio art because I didn't feel like it." Or, you know, "I don't want to do that because it's, you know..." Or, you know, my son saying, "I don't want to do that because there's, you know, there's... All the girls take this." And, you know, I mean, it's just arming us with the more information of, "Well, here's why it's important and here's kind of what the track looks like." So, I'm going to think about it because I think there's a way to do a little more... And maybe it's more parent-driven.
Well, I was going to say, maybe you want to partner with a PTA and just say, you know, "What have you been hearing?" Those are all experienced parents. How might we put our heads together? Because that might be a vehicle, but it...
Yeah.
Because those will be the parents that know what's going on. It's going to be that bulk of the parents that is hard to reach.
I'll just reach out to them and say, you know, "What ideas..." This was expressed. What ideas do you have?
Or capitalize on some of the PTA meetings prior to the parent gatherings and when the information comes out to get them in the loop.
Your big computer science class, that's going to start in sixth grade for all students?
Correct.
So, that one is for all students.
Right, 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 right.
Yep.
But, great job. I love all this stuff.
Beautiful. Thank you. I'll turn it back over to Mr. Klugman.
Thank you, David, Mark. Joanne, one additional comment to that. As the former science supervisor, we have kids in the high school... You know, the state mandate is that kids have to finish high school with three science credits by the time they graduate. And in our high school, we have kids that actually finish with seven science credits. And the luxury, as Mark mentioned, with IED and studio and art is if kids don't take it as an eighth grader, they can obviously take that again in the high school. The opportunity that exists for those kids that do take it as eighth graders are for those kids that know that they want that capstone course, which requires five years. So, when you think about the percentage or segment of our population that is so affirmed that they know that, I don't know that we're looking at a large group. To one of the questions that was asked, we do have, obviously, enough kids to stock a second section. But, when we consider that, we also consider the ramifications of, you know, how it might impact art or how it might impact music or how it might impact some of the other exploratory arts. So, there are those considerations as well. And it's a conflict sometimes at the middle level and even at the high school level. I think our high school does a great job of giving kids a phenomenally well-rounded experience. And I think the two hardest things, the two hardest decisions that our high school grads encounter are, number one, when they're in high school and what they want to take, because they can't take everything. There's such a luxury of diversity in curriculum that they can't possibly engage in at all. And then, secondarily, our kids who are really engaged across all their content subjects, who are engaged extracurricularly with music or athletics, they often have difficult decisions when they go to college because that's the time when they really have to now say, "Well, am I going to go the English route or am I going to go the science route?" And that's an even tougher decision. So, unfortunately, with my parent head on, I'm not looking forward to those decisions either or trying to help them through those. The other programmatic update that I wanted to give you is not necessarily a new course. And I guess the context that I would give you or the subtext that I would give you is, I've worked in four or five different districts now. And in every one of those districts, there was a perception that middle school grading was radically different than high school gradings. And I think, when you distill that down to the elements that create that perception, by and large, high school teachers have, you know, whether it's a blessing or a curse, they have an external structure that guides what they teach and how they teach it in a lot of the regents exam and final exam structures. We don't have that or a lot of that at the middle school level. So, we don't have that external structure that gives us a sense as to whether our quarterly grading is on a par with how students are performing with that summit of assessment. So, perception sometimes drives a lot of that. So, what we've done over the last three or four years is done a statistical analysis that's both qualitative and quantitative. So, we've used surveyed data from teachers at both the high school and the middle school to look at our grading practices. We've had a two-year ad hoc committee just in the middle school that has involved teachers that travel between both buildings and looked at the grading practices in both buildings. As I said, we've surveyed folks. There's a DayTagLifter, which is a group of administrators, teachers, and, you know, what I guess you'd call chief data officers, you know, a position that was relatively unheard of five or six years ago in New York State schools. But, now, that is almost ubiquitous to any school district. And those individuals are out on this Lifter. And very often, anytime you have a question about metrics and how schools are using them, it's a great resource. So, they've been a wealth of information. And Jay McTig as well, who's one of the authors of Understanding by Design, actually spent some time with myself and some middle school teachers to talk about this. And long story short, we came down to, as a result of all this work and the surveys, four areas that you see up on the screen now that we have worked with supervisors and that we will implement next year as of this coming September to be more consistent across our building, but yet progressive. So, we understand that as students transition from fifth to sixth grade, the grading structure there will look very different as students transfer, for instance, from eighth to ninth grade. So, with regard to homework, by department, we will be defining, you know, what homework consists of because homework can look very different in math, say, when you have homework every single night versus English, where you're working on one writing piece for perhaps a week or two weeks at a time. We are going to have a consistent definition for remediation because some teachers, when they talk about remediation, may just be talking about tests and quizzes. Other teachers may be talking about the everyday homework assignments that they do. And we have found, through our survey and through our discussions with staff, that we are not consistent in how we define remediation. And obviously, if we're not consistent in how we define it, we can't be consistent in how we quantify it. So, that's a piece that we'll be working on to implement next fall as well. And then, we used several authors' pieces. One of them is the Fixes for Grading by a gentleman that Jody put us onto about four or five years ago. And the very first fix in that book speaks to grading being driven only by academic content. So, that seems like a given. But, at the middle school level, to give you an example of one area where this typically sometimes is refuted, teachers know that if they can get students to do their homework, the very simple nature of doing their homework will increase students' test averages. So, sometimes, teachers will give students an organization grade if they write their homework assignments down or if they hand in a table of contents. So, that can loosely be defined on either side of, is that academic content or not? So, those are things that will be defined in each of our departments and across grade levels, with an emphasis on maintaining some of our structures to help students be organized and some of our supports for parents that obviously include Aspen and our agenda books. And then, lastly, we also are going to define what extra credit is and very specifically, set a ceiling percentage on how much that can be applied towards student work. And one of our teachers made a very astute comment that almost every teacher in our building uses one of two, perhaps three. The third one's really a hybrid of the first two. Teachers typically grade in one of two patterns. They use total points and that's basically it. So, if a student accumulates a possible or can accumulate a possible 500 points in the quarter, if they get 400 out of those 500 points, they get an 80% as their average for the quarter. Other teachers, instead of using total points, they'll use a weighted system where they basically stack their grades into categories. So, for instance, a teacher might say, "All of my tests and quizzes are going to count as 50% of a student's grade," whereas their homework's going to count as 10 or 15% of the grade. And I might give 1,000 points of homework, but only 10% of what that score is is going to count toward their grade. And a lot of our teachers, and I can speak to this as well, in my experience as a teacher, I can give you the ballparks of what I would give to students with regard to the weights of their grades. But, when push came to shove, I wasn't necessarily accurately going back at the end of a quarter and reverse-engineering that system to no matter of factly what the exact percentages were. So, if I gave a kid an extra credit question on a test that was something, a review structure from an earlier test earlier in the year, you know, I didn't keep track of those three or four extra points on that test accumulating throughout the year. So, we're going to be better with that. And Aspen, actually, some of our veteran teachers who have been some of the early adopters with using Aspen to be live grading, so they're posting their grades online, have identified that Aspen actually can do a lot of this, you know, the heavy lifting for us. So, we've identified with Sal D'Angelo, and we're very excited about the training opportunities that we have this summer, that we can do some things even before we start this work in departments over the summertime to set teachers up to be more aware of where their grading practices are. Because we obviously have some defining to do, but we also have some awareness pieces once those definitions are set. And I think what you'll see is greater consistency across the building so that, you know, I as a principal and I as a parent want to have confidence that, when junior goes through the middle school, they don't have a totally different experience, depending on what team they're on. We'll know that, as they go through, whether they go through P1 or P2 or Mohawk, that their experience, the grade they get in one place is going to be very similar to the amount of work they'll have and the grade they'll have in another place. And last but not least, if there are any questions, we'll certainly field those out.
I have a comment.
Yeah?
I actually think, and I'm glad you brought up that behavior compliance piece, I actually think that is a... One of the good things about the... And I don't know if you do it beyond sixth grade, but I noticed that there's a lot of focus, especially at that sixth grade level, of grading kids on how well-organized they are and, you know, check the notebook and check whether you're writing stuff down. I mean, I thought that was really useful because I think it's teaching kids how to study, how to be organized. And, you know, that was something I was thinking back, you know, when I was a kid in junior high. You know, it was sort of a little bit more of a sink-or-swim kind of thing. Whereas, I think the middle school does a really good job of getting kids used to, you know, who are used to an elementary environment where everything's, you know, prescribed and scripted and so forth, to a whole different environment, but kind of leads them along and teaches them not just, you know, the academics and grades them on those things, but also grades them on things like organization and really the skills, which are the building blocks for academic success. So, I think that is done really well here.
Well, to your point, I think it's a term that's more synonymous with the elementary level. But, we also ascribe to it the middle school, which is the gradual release of responsibility. And to your point, in a junior high school model, kids are really scheduled like they would be in high school. There's no necessarily connectivity between a group of students. They're haphazardly scheduled into all their classes so they might never see the same student throughout their school day. In a middle school model, we use a teaming structure. But typically, in a junior high school model, you'd see exactly what you described, which is that kids are kind of left to their own devices. And when you think about the dependent structures that are in place in elementary school that naturally change because of the transitions they have between teachers at the middle level, to assume that all students are going to be ready for that release of responsibility to maintain all of their organizational demands, I think you get a lot of support from our teachers to say that we think that at the sixth grade, you know, giving students, you know, a bone every now and then for staying organized definitely has an impact on their academic performance. So, there's a piece to that. We'll be able to, again, through the Aspen structure, we'll be able to set caps on those things. So, we can still leverage it so it's useful, but we can also set a cap on it so it's not the end-all and be-all.
Right. And the other thing, and I'm going to channel Kate Navarro here for a second, who I hope she's watching at home because I think what she would say is that the consistency is key. There's nothing worse than sort of seeing, you know, inconsistency in the application of a grading system, you know, from class to class or, you know, the different houses. You sort of hear a little bit about that. Sometimes, you experience that and see the inconsistent sort of application of, you know, what's important in the grading, you know, construct. So, I'm sure Kate would want us to focus on that and glad that you are.
Well, and you know, a reality that we discovered is that our teachers really haven't been defensive about this. They've been very overtly collaborative to expose what they're doing. And I think the paradigm that folks are used to is that teaching happens a lot in isolation. You close your door and you're kind of an island unto yourself. And that has the negative context that really affects our staff, which is that our staff, I think, want to be collaborative. They want to know what their peers are doing, but there isn't necessarily a sharing structure that is so myopic that it goes all... It drills all the way down to the grading practices. So, this two-year ad hoc committee has been phenomenal in bringing some of those observations out and edifying all of our staff with regard to, you know, the general practice that exists in the building and also some of the inconsistent practices as well.
And that... This is all going into effect for the... Starting the next school?
This coming fall, yeah.
Anyone else for Mike?
Just real quick. You showed like the technology, the art. Are there other courses that you're accelerating in at the middle school? Like, I imagine in the math and so forth, or any other areas?
Yeah, so, going back more years than I've been in the district, which is eight now, we've accelerated students in math. They actually start that acceleration in fourth or fifth grade. What Dave Hurst has successfully built throughout the middle school range are flexible opportunities for students to jump in on that. So, it hasn't been a rigid structure where you either had one doorway to enter the accelerated structure, say, in fifth grade, and then you couldn't get in until, you know, you got to high school. So, students can challenge into that at any point. We also... The New York State mandate for foreign languages is that students actually only need one year of foreign language at the middle level. As you all know, we start with foreign language in sixth grade. So, by the time our students get to eighth grade, they actually take the foreign language proficiency. And we have, I think, a 97% success rate, maybe even upwards of 98, 99% in some years. And our students typically can jump right into a second foreign language if they so choose because they're fulfilling that sequence fairly early on in the high school as a result.
So, as far as English, social studies, and science currently, there's no acceleration. Have you thought about that or looked into it?
We have specifically the challenge or the commonality, it seems, with a lot of schools is the science aspect, either with living environment or with earth science. So, the lab piece is a staffing challenge because it typically breaks your staff and your FTE structure. So, that's really difficult to have one teacher have a full 1.0 teaching responsibility because the lab is usually a one-day-a-week-to-an-every-other-day kind of structure. The way we make it work at the high school, for example, is that one region science teacher might have four contacts and there's a lab associated with each of those contacts. So, it's fairly easy to round out their FTE structure. At the middle school, if you only had one or two sections, it's a much more difficult staffing piece. The other piece that I think, and just from a historical perspective, for those that were on the board back then, I think it was 10 years ago, that Dr. Loomis and Bruce Tullock, who was my predecessor as the science supervisor, did a cost-benefit analysis of this. It would have been very costly from a staffing perspective. The other issue that came about was, there was a very strong likelihood that a different teacher would teach the same student in the course and then again in the lab. And there are actually some high schools regionally that do that. We don't consider that a best practice because we want the lab so attached to the curriculum that both reinforce each other. And that then feeds back into the grading structure as well, not to mention the affective connection that the student has to one teacher and the ability to ask conceptual questions in the higher-level sciences, like our AP sciences.
Anyone else for Mike?
Thank you very much. Mr. Klugman and Mr. Warford and Mr. Zadorian, thank you very much.
Next, at this time, the board has set aside this time for anybody in the audience who would like to address the board on any agenda item. Is there anybody who would like to come up and address the board? Okay. Item number eight, finance. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following finance action items, A through D. A through D.
No more.
That's a first and a second. Any discussion?
I actually have two things. I, I know that the wards aren't listed here, but I did have a question on one of the items on the ward. I'm not sure, I gave you very little time to respond, but I emailed you about, there's on page two of the wards, there's a $79,000 payment to the library for taxes. I know that Mrs. Kehoe isn't here.
Yeah, she responded.
She responded. So, let me read.
Okay, I didn't respond.
Response to taxes to library. Unpaid school slash library taxes from September 2014 get re-levered on the January 2015 tax bill. In April, the county pays us the collected amount. The payment to the library represents their share of these taxes.
Great. Sorry, I didn't see that email.
Easy question.
And then on the change orders, Mr. Cooper and I were on the facilities committee, so we went through these. There, just a note for the board that I believe we asked, that there was one we discussed that does not appear here. I believe that's coming in a future meeting for discussion of the possibility of putting turf as opposed to seed on the softball fields.
If I may say, not turf.
Soft, 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 soft.
Actually, sod turf is what we're talking about.
Natural grass.
Real natural grass.
Okay.
And if I may, Dr. Wood, just saying, what it is, is we had always expected to take both softball fields offline. That was going to happen this year. Because of the weather and the delays in thaw and frost, we were able to actually get through the entire year with softball, and they, they're playing their sectional game Friday night, so I don't believe they're here, but the fields are almost ready to be taken over by construction. The problem is, is as we go through the timeline and everything is able to grow out where the old practice football field is, which they're almost completing now, when they start to strip down the JBV field, and that field also has, I believe, field hockey in its outfield, that the recommendation right now from construction manager and Scott, I can, I think I can see is right there. Scott and Greg have brought to me is they'd like to increase in expenses, about 46 to 40, $50,000, to sod that whole area, similar to what we had to do on the stadium. The primary purpose is, one, is it closes up the ground quicker. It requires less grow time, only two seasons, and by being able to do it in July, they would end up getting the July-August season that the field would potentially be ready for next year. Instead of having two fields down, now we would only have one field down, and that would assist in next year's scheduling. And that cost, we, we've sort of gone back and forth with it, because we've been really trying to keep that cost down, but it is a cost that might be appropriate to be calculated how, how we proceed. I hope that I represent-
So, it's more of a heads-up that that will be coming for board discussion? We didn't, we didn't feel comfortable acting on that one.
We'll be looking at other possible projects with the extra money from the bond, and we didn't feel it was appropriate to send it forward without looking at other things that might be done with that money.
Is there a whole list of alternates?
There, there is some alternates, like we have one that's out to, we have one that's out to bid right now, which is the front pit entrance for the middle school. We just did the big alternate for paving down at the transportation center. There's, there's others that we have in a priority list that we're going to ask that they present, and I think it's June 5th. And that way, we would have it that night to make a, a decision. We'll put it on the agenda. We can always remove it if that's not what the board wishes. But I, I have a feeling that we're going to make that recommendation to do that. We're about, I think, 450, I think $450,000 to the good right now, even after approving any of the change orders tonight. And that also still allows us, I think, $30,000 in allowances that were still to the good. And in our budget, we have 100, this year's budget, we still have the $175,000 in donation. So, we're in very good financial shape. We're about 70% done with the project. But now, we're looking at the alternates to try to capture what is the most important. And, and again, bring the project in on time, under budget or on budget. So, I think we're setting a good tone for that.
With the sod, they could be playing next season, next spring?
At least one field could be.
If they put the sod down.
Right. If they don't, neither field will be ready.
Okay, and then where would they play?
Most likely, we'd have to work between line drive and any available field, which we were going to have to do this year. So, we would make the accommodations all the way around.
So, when, I guess when we do the discussion, that, the extra cost for transportation and stuff, or running other fields?
Well, remember, that extra cost was built into this, this factor, but we try to save where we tend to spend our money the best way.
It's gonna be not that much of a difference.
Yeah.
Probably rather play on our own fields.
Yeah.
All right. And I would note that item C is also a, the Bethlehem Principal Association Agreement for the period July 1st, 2015 through June 30th, 2019. Dr. Douglas and the administration have negotiated this agreement, and we would like to thank the BPA for their hard work and for coming to a very fiscally responsible agreement with the board and with Dr. Douglas. And I anticipate that we'll approve it, so, thank you again.
And they're all here in the back corner up there, so, everybody wait.
It's a, a cause for some small raises for the, for the principals, but they also have given back in terms of increased.
Yeah, I, I would say, on behalf of them, they were a pleasure to work with. Additionally, it is within the, the structure that all of our other contracts have been in, they have always been straightforward and out in front, and very generous, and one of the true units that took true freezes of their pay during the most difficult times.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? That item carries. Item number nine, professional personnel. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following instructional staff action items A through P.
Subpo.
Second.
That's a first and a second. Any discussion?
Can I ask a question?
Oh, sorry, go.
No, I just wondered why, since we already approved, and the community approved the budget that included all the new positions, why we're separating them out again to approve them?
Officially, the budget's approved, but the board would have to take legislative action to create the position.
Yeah.
At this point. The budget approves the spending.
Right, that we would be doing that when the actual recommendation comes forward.
This, in order to do the postings.
Yes. You gotta establish a position, as I understand it.
This has always been the procedure of creating the position and then going through and posting, although we have done some anticipated posting to try to get ahead of the curve.
It's the same-
We just haven't created positions.
Right.
Yeah, it's been a long time, so this is a good one.
Same as our last few years, when we reduced positions, we then had to actually list the positions that we abolished, and now we have to add them back.
Yeah. It's sort of like, you know, first in, first out, and going through the procedures and making sure we document and create the formal record, especially for the Office of State Control.
Okay. My question is, item P, we hadn't done that one before. It's from August 2014.
Oh, that's the-
It's a resignation.
Yes, that's the resignation. This one, I believe, is relatively mute, just because we had appointed someone to the position for the year. However, it was a piece of paperwork that was lost in the athletic. We're just filing up to make the documented record.
Okay, got it.
It, it just gives validity to the fact that it was a resignation.
Right, okay, thanks.
Anyone else? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed, any abstentions? That item carries. Item number 10, support personnel. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following support staff action items A through D. First and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed, any abstentions? That item carries. Item number 11, correspondence for action. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following correspondence action item A.
Subpo.
Second.
First and second. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed, any abstentions? That item carries. Now, at this time, the board has set time aside for anyone who would like to address the board on any non-agenda item.
Good evening, everyone. I think you know my name. I also wanted to thank the members of the board and central administration for the approval and ratification of the administrative contract. As president of the unit, I'm one of the least senior members, so we have a group that's been around for quite a while, a tremendously competent and collaborative group. We are benefited in Bethlehem to have great kids, great parents, a great support structure, great teachers, and certainly great leadership in each of our buildings. And we were thrilled at how quickly this whole process came to fruition. So, we, I know I speak on, on behalf of our unit for, when I say that we're grateful for how quickly this got resolved, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, future meetings. Our next regular board meeting is Wednesday, June 3rd, with an executive session start time of 6 o'clock. We'll then have a teacher tenure reception at 6:30 with a board meeting at 7:00 PM. We look forward to seeing all the tenured teachers there and be able to congratulate them in person.